Welcome everyone. I don't have any major announcements, but I mean, do you want to make a note? You probably all noticed the new face at the end of the table. New returning face. Nancy Perkins taking in Maggie's seat for the town of Cornish, so welcome back. Okay, we're good. Minutes. Consideration to approve the minutes for the January 8th Board of Directors meeting.
So who?
Bradley.
Second.
Don.
All in favor? Nancy, she doesn't hear.
Yep.
Consideration to approve the proposed agenda for the February 5th Board of Directors meeting.
Bradley.
Second.
Don.
In favor? Student report.
So I will, Bridget couldn't be here tonight. I will take her place. Good evening. The Scholastic Art Awards is the nation's longest-running, most prestigious recognition program for creative teens. This year, six Sauk Valley High School students won a total of seventeen awards in the Maine region where there are over one thousand entries. Winners include Sarah Cox, Autumn Niles, Cody Taylor, Rory Littlefield, Arizona Johnson, and Zoe Pierce. Cody was also nominated for the American Vision Award, an honor given to only five students in Maine. Nine of these pieces will be on display at the Maine College of Art this winter. Congratulations. Congratulations to the cheerleading team for their third-place finish at the Western Maine Conference Championship and their seventh-place finish at Regionals. The cheerleading team is now off to the state competition on Saturday, February 8th. The senior class will be putting on a winter semi-formal dance February 8th, and the winter carnival will take place at the high school on February 14th starting at noon. Students will have the opportunity to choose from numerous activities such as snowshoeing, basketball, ping pong, cookie baking, and cornhole.
I have one more thing to add to that.
Go ahead, Brad.
So this past week, I notified the winner of, or the recipient of the 2025 Maine Principals Award, and that is Senior Bridget Landry. So that award is based on academic excellence, leadership, and citizenship.
Brad?
I've been asleep for five months, I guess. I'm just wondering, we used to have a senior and a junior on the school board, and we don't, apparently don't have a junior this year. Did I miss something? What's going on?
I think we mentioned at the first meeting of the year, we didn't have junior interest this year.
I thought it was an appointment by the administration.
Yeah, I don't think we had anybody express interest in the position.
Is this gonna continue?
I don't know.
Well?
We will have to, if it's the wish of the board to continue to have student representatives, we'll advertise for positions in June or towards the end of the school year.
Well, in response to that, would it be appropriate to advertise right now so that we could give somebody a head start going into the rest of this year? Did anybody else notice this, wonder about this? Am I the only one that's?
No, we were told.
Yeah, I think we talked about the lack of junior.
We had made the kids have interest in sitting here and talking to us.
And then, I don't remember what meeting it was at, but I think talking about other ways to be involved with students are either going to them or bringing in the different groups more often, or?
I thought it was a great idea, the way it sounded, and it was working out well, and I'm just curious as to why we did not pursue it, continue it. I can't believe, there must be, what, eighty kids in this junior cat class?
I think a couple of years back, I don't wanna mention a kid, but I think junior room had to recruit someone pretty heavy to, I don't think we had interest a couple of years back either. For better or worse.
Well, I think it's a shame that it has not been continued, that we don't have students that, at least one student.
There are sixty-four in junior.
Sorry, sixty-four? Okay. At least one kid who would be an appropriate member to, okay, a junior is red, must have a sophomore. I'm doing a two-year run.
So I think that knowing we can't force someone to take part, right, but whenever, is that how it typically worked before? Or has it been put out, hey, we're looking for kids that are, wanna apply to the?
Yeah, and there's an application form with just a couple of questions. Why do you wanna do this? Do you have time to do this? What things are you involved in? Can you get there? And then we do interviews so that they're ready to start in September.
So no one applied? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think that maybe if that is the case again this year, either we discuss recruiting kids a little bit more, or we discuss doing it differently to meet them on their, I mean, I do recognize the fact that all of the students that have been in this role while I've been on the board are also involved in literally everything else. So those, I mean, it's gotta be a lot for them to try to show up here too, so maybe we need to meet them where they're at, student council meeting, something. I don't know the best way to do that, but I guess maybe start, try going through the motions and see if someone's, if there's interest, and then if not.
And I think you'd have to change policy if you wanted to change grade levels. Term office is two years. These student representatives must remain in grades eleven and twelve. So the policy wouldn't allow for younger than eleven and twelve at this time. Now, you're the board, you can change your own policy, except for right now, they'd have to be eleventh and twelfth.
Council?
We said we had sixty-seven?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four. So out of that pool of sixty-four kids, the ones that live at the farthest reaches of the district, this might not be a real attractive thing for them to attend, and the ones that don't have a license, you know, so the pool is not really sixty-four. It's a lot less than that.
Or if like, or if this time?
I'm sorry?
Or if still at sports at this time?
Business report.
So that would be me, and be the same as our monthly report. You can see that revenues continue to exceed expenses, and our expenses are in line with the budget. Food service, thankfully. First time, a few years back, he saw this, he was a little bit of a panic, has caught up to the point of only being upside down five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Adult ed revenue exceed expenses and is on the upside. All expenses are in line, and financially halfway through, we are in good shape.
That'll be me as well. So I have three items to report on from the construction committee. The first was, a high school senior, Cameron Barron, presented to the committee about painting a yellow tool in project design on the wall leading up to the module behind the high school. She and Melissa Amborn came to the meeting. They did a fabulous job presenting, talking about what they wanted to paint, where they wanted to paint it. A super example of one of our kids doing great things. The committee bet bless her painting. And on my way into the ballgame last night, saw her in her art gear, starting it. So that was pretty terrific. Congratulations, Cameron. High school elevator continues to be a problem. We have had OTCR multiple times. When I reported construction, shows you how things changed. It was fixed. They had been here for a few days, and now it is back to not working. It is a switching issue. And Johnny says, hey Charles, did you get my email the elevator's down again? It's tripping out like before. I'm not exactly sure what tripping out like before means. If anybody cares to jump in, feel free. But Charles responds, sorry for the delay. Our tech will be onsite with, see how and when is being unloaded to confirm. So if you've noticed that, if you've been in our school, we are aware the elevators are a problem. They have been out multiple times. We cannot, we get it fixed temporarily, and it continues to not work. It's frustrating for everybody. We apologize for our community who uses it to get to our gymnasium. We are trying to get that right.
Any students being affected?
I think there are people being affected, yes. Yep.
So our agents will be maybe?
Yes, 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 yes. But it'd be great if it worked. And I don't know that it doesn't work all the time, kinda thing. I think it's a frustrating nuisance that it keeps tripping out. You take that for whatever it means. You're welcome. And the last item that we covered, Sue and I went to a community group focused on emergency planning for our community, talking about weather events, heating, cooling. At one of those events, the group mentioned a generator through a grant process. They had written up a document, and these are wild estimates. I took this to our construction committee, and I know these are wild estimates. A generator powered this middle school to be an emergency shelter. The estimate was five hundred thousand dollars. That might be way high, way low. I don't know the answer. But local funding would be responsible for a quarter of whatever it would be. That came to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The committee felt at this time, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to pick up in our school budget. I think we will have some increases this year, as you know, trying to pay our people more competitively. Felt like that made it a non-starter. Some other factors that they considered, even if we had this generator working at this school, we couldn't run school because only this school would run, and I don't know to what degree students, they'll have to cancel high school and elementary. And with all of our focus on safety and security, having people in the school and the logistics of community members in and when and how they'd be in might pose a challenge. Certainly, the biggest factor was funding. I reported that to the emergency group, that it was a non-starter for our construction committee, and that's what I have.
Nancy?
Can I make a request that that come before the construction committee again? I'm not speaking as a board member. I'm speaking as a citizen who attended that meeting. And I think the unfortunate thing is, there's a history that goes with that. And the history that goes with that is that the townspeople were promised a certain thing. And I think, don't disregard it. I would, I'm making a request that it puts back on the construction committee's agenda so that we can look at other aspects of that. And one of the things that, there was no mention of the school paying for that. The five towns would have been approached for that money. It would not have come from. So I think, I'm just requesting that it be put back on the agenda so that the construction committee, and I will come, and I'm sure Cam will be there also. And it's one of those things, that those people who were here when the middle school was built were promised certain things. And one does have to honor what the past is. So it'd be nice to sort of look at it, see if there is some middle ground or some way that there can be an agreement on what was said and how to deal with what was said in a positive manner. And I don't know who the chair of the curriculum committee?
I think.
It's not me. That one isn't mine.
Well, I'm making a request that it goes back on.
So the only thing I wanna say, Nancy, is in the document that that group wrote, it said, confirmation of how the twenty-five percent cost share will be paid. Let's say this is five hundred thousand. In that case, the federal government will pay three hundred and seventy-five thousand, or seventy-five percent. The remaining one twenty-five must come from local sources. Examples of how you could get there. MSAD fifty-five pays the entire hundred and twenty-five thousand. MSAD fifty-five pays seventy-five thousand, and the towns of Hyrum, Porter, Volvo, Parsons, Field, and Cornish pay twelve-five each, or any combination like this. So maybe those were hypotheticals, but I think they caused a concern.
Well, I think because it's out in the community, and there are hard feelings, I think it just needs to go back into committee and then discuss it again and see if there can't be some positive way to deal with the whole thing.
Yep, great. And what about agenda?
Curriculum committee report.
Super. So hopefully you have the printed copy, but we were super fortunate to have Principal Lane and Assistant Principal Logan join us, and they did a lovely presentation. They reviewed their attendance, concerns about the population of students that seem to be missing a substantial amount of time. One of our newer teachers, Jennifer Gazebich, who's taught at some other schools, spoke about her super positive experience at Sauk Valley Middle School, and noted that she really wants to continue to try and build more parent engagement. Principal Lane talked about meeting with teams to discuss curriculum fidelity and implementation, and that's been going incredibly well. He also had a lovely video from a student who took about reading at home and how wonderful it was and how much she loved it, and she read two hours a night at home. It was really engaging. Kelly Goodfield shared about our kids teaching Kids Day that's coming up with a couple of students. I think I sent you all that date. Hopefully you'll be able to join us. A science teacher shared about a science lesson and some of the collaborations she's making with some universities. Assistant Principal Logan talked about the benefit of our cell phone policy and the high expectations, and really working on parent communication. And then they shared some challenging situations with students, vaguely just saying sometimes we have to really think outside the box to meet the needs of all of our students. But I think it was very worthwhile.
It was a very good presentation. The videos of the kids, kids did a great job, actually.
I'd like to commend Principal Mike Lane for his cell phone policy and what it appears to be doing, and being successful and beneficial to the kids, although the kids may not feel that way. Anyway, there is something that concerns me. In fact, I met with Mr. Lane yesterday morning, and this is student attendance. We have kids that are missing, right now we're at half year. They're missing forty and fifty days in school. My question was, let's look at those same kids and how many days they would be at last year. It was pretty much the same. So my following question was this, why are they in the next grade? You know, this is, this is why, in my estimation, this is why, you know, Maine has, is thirty-eighth in the nation student achievement-wise. You know, ship them out to the next grade, it doesn't help. And I don't think it's a student problem. I don't think it's a teacher problem. It's a parent problem. You know? They have to get these kids to school. And maybe if we were to tell those parents right now at half year, and if the school board would submit, you know, if we could adopt this, and the school board would support the administration in telling these parents, you know, get those kids here. If you get them here, if you get them in school, we can teach them. If you can't have them in school, then, you know, they'll stay in the same grade next year. And I don't care if they're coming to school and they own call bets when they're in the sixth grade. You know, at some point, you gotta draw the line. And I don't care how much the parents come in and scream at him, or the principals, or whoever. There needs to be some recognition of what's expected. You know? And this district alone can't remove the state from being thirty-eighth in the nation in school achievement. However, we can make a difference here, and that's something we need to discuss. And I think we need to send the administration a message and support them. Don?
Thank you. What is our attendance, like, board attendance policy? What have we set for attendance policy currently?
Well, our policy follows state law about truancy. What's messy with truancy is that excused absences don't count towards that. So then you get into, and the state a few years ago added, any sort of social, emotional, mental health as an excusable absence. So if a parent were to call and say, my child is anxious about coming to school today, that now is an excusable absence, so it doesn't fall under the truancy policy. So we have very few truant students usually, because typically, parents call and excuse the absence. So it's very tricky from a teeth standpoint for truancy. We absolutely have had, and Principal Wolf could probably talk to it better than I can at this point. Our social, our school counselors and our administration do follow truancy. We do the letters. Dr. Larry sends the letters. If it still doesn't improve, we report it to DHHS. We do not know of any families that DHHS has followed up with for any sort of truancy issues. So it is a challenge. I think board support, and we've certainly at the administrative level and at the teacher level talked about retention. And it's a tricky thing when you read research. Retention says it doesn't work. What I always think is tricky about research in education is every student is different. We can't easily predict, well, what would happen if we did retain them? What happens if we don't? So I think the research is hard to really say that it's perfectly valid, but it's a very challenging topic.
Because I just, to put you on the spot, I don't know every state policy. Does a law regarding holding students back, like, is there a threshold for, here's the point where, in law that they wouldn't move on? Or is that just a?
We also have a policy about retention, where we look at their absences, their academics, their social, emotional. Yes, we have a policy that guides us.
But it's our policy.
It is our policy.
A state law about?
We followed the suggested document, probably from MSMA, but there isn't a law that would say you have to,
This is the threshold?
For, or you have to retain for these sort of documents. It's usually a decision at the school level. But it's very challenging.
We could take a look at that.
No, I think that's a great, I wrote it as a topic to talk to our principals about at state of the schools, what would they look for from support from the school board? I think we've seen successful support from you, from the bus. Is this our next step? How do we work collaboratively on this topic? Cause it certainly is an issue.
Is it still up, or is it up?
Yeah.
I thought I saw you put it down.
I have a point. So I heard you say earlier that there's no proof that keeping them back?
Well, research says, I didn't say that was my personal, like, I think it's very tricky. Research says retention is not an effective model. But I think what's tricky about that is, I don't know, I'll put Becky in the spot. If I retain Becky and she drops out, I don't know what would have happened to Becky if I just pushed her forward. And I think every student is different, so it's very tricky, I think, that research. When you're talking typically about a student who you're considering retaining, they're already a struggling learner, or they're unengaged, like, they have lots of other things that come to the table, not just our decision to retain or not.
So is there any research that proves that pushing them forward?
No, no. No, I would say, yes, no.
So, I'm just feeling, this is a personal opinion, that if we set a standard, and, you know, if X number of kids don't get pushed on to the next grade next year, that the message will get around, and maybe some of those parents will deliver those kids to school, or see that they get here. You know, the issue is that they're not coming to school. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, definitely. I was just looking down to see, Mr. Lane referenced ninety-two students have already missed seven days or more, which at the time of that meeting was probably eight to nine percent of the school year.
There were some that?
We were right around day eighty-ish.
Some of them were twenty, thirty, and forty days they're missing, and one was six. I asked about last year. There was one kid missed over sixty days last year, and he went to the next grade. Hello? You know, I'm not looking to punish kids. I'm looking to maybe help them to get an education for parents that don't value education. This is something that the school board needs to address and take a stand on. I don't care if you agree with me or not. If you don't agree with me, that's fine. Speak up, but, but, you know, we're not in the situation that we're in as far as achievement-wise, because we're doing a great job. Brad has a point, but there's another view to it. Also, these young students will eventually become adults, and they have to provide for their own living. And so they do need an education. However, the education we offer them is more like for college preparatory. Maybe they need to be steered towards a trade school, something that they like. My father worked at a trade school in Hartford, Connecticut for thirty-five years. And they would take on students. After they finished a freshman year in high school, they'd come to the trade school, and they start freshman year over again. One week was academic, one week was trade, and they'd go through four years. And the purpose was to feed the industrial Connecticut a workforce. Trade school is an answer. I agree with you a hundred percent, but they need to have the basic school skills, basic math.
Well, we have to get them to freshman year.
There are some students that don't have the mental capacity to do it, and a lot of them don't have the attitude to want to do it. If you expose them to a trade that's doing something with their, more with their hands, and they can pick and choose a field that would be more interesting to them. It's an attitude problem.
So you know that that will come from a future policy review?
We bring it, so we are concerned about attendance as well, so I think thinking creatively, and if it comes from board support, I think that's wonderful.
And I think having a more robust discussion at state of the schools makes a lot of sense. At state of the schools, a more robust discussion on this topic makes a lot of sense, in direction we're going and what we're gonna do with these children.
Well, if we don't teach them when they're young, that they have to get up and get going, and it's just gonna follow them through their whole life. I mean, if you reward them for passing them right through, what is that teaching them? It's not teaching the parents to help out either, if they don't, if it comes to school.
Like, Regen had no meeting?
No.
Don had no meeting? Policies, maybe, report, do they need anything?
I think all of our work that we did is in front of you about the first reads and the policies to remove.
All right, then action item, consideration to approve the following policies as first read.
Judy?
Second.
Don?
I'm just gonna read them out loud with the camera. IHBAA, referral and use of general education interventions. AC-R, grievance procedure for persons with disabilities. IHBAK, life sustaining emergency care. JKAA, use of fiscal restraint and exclusion. And JKAA-R, use of physical restraint and exclusion procedures. We have a motion as second?
Sue.
Oh, he's got them all right.
I have a Judy, Judy, Don, motion second.
All right, those in favor, first read?
I think Nancy's abstaining.
Nancy's abstaining, yep.
Thank you.
Consideration to remove the following policies.
Judy?
Second.
Don?
Same thing. I'll just read them out loud. ACA-A-R, student discrimination, harassment, and title five sexual harassment complaint procedures. ACAB-R, employee discrimination, harassment, title, that's not five, nine, sexual. Look, I'm working on Super Bowl numerals, okay? Sexual harassment complaint procedures. GCG, substitute teachers. ECA, building security and keys. And GC. And GCIB, in-service requirements for instructional staff. Those in favor?
This one may be helpful to explain, too. I don't know if you want to ask first, I was like, this one might want to explain what these are, we're deleting, and why.
Well, maybe we need to talk about this first. So, I don't know where to put things in today's educational environment, I'm just not sure where some things go. And the, there's a new focus that, that is not the direction that we have gone for a great many years. Eliminating Title IX is probably going to happen anyway, whether or not you do that. But I was wondering if you are, I didn't know what to put this, but when you look at all of the policies that we have in place, that, like Title IX was meant to protect. SEL is meant to protect in another way. And what I see is a massive change away from the way education has been handled. And what I'm wondering is if you're getting anything from the Principals Association, or from main school management, are you getting, or from the Department of Education, are you getting, is everybody just sort of sitting and waiting for it all to happen, and then see how it's going to fit? Or are we going to, you know, it's like, I think this is part of the reason why they put me on here, because I pay attention. I still am involved in a lot of sites that deal with this. And the funding that we get, where is the funding connected to the things that they're talking about eliminating? And the reason I wanted to ask is I want to know, is anybody helping you? Whether it's, you know, when you think of the three big theoretical groups that are supposed to be helping you, the Department of Education, and the Principals Association, main school management, are they doing anything to help you at all?
So the elimination of ACAA-R and ACA is only because they've actually sent, we have four new policies. That, that, well, today, we've adopted R1 and R2 for each of those, so this was just cleaning up to make it official. These ones are deleted because we've now replaced two with four, so that is some of that. So what we're hearing, though, really, the only guidance that we've received recently has been around concerns, if I should arrive at our school to check for any students who might be here in the country. That's really been the biggest focus and the concern that we're seeing guidance on. There hasn't been a lot of guidance around Title IX. We do, we are anticipating reduction in our Title I funds because of what's going on at the U.S. Department of Education. Maine is very uneasy about what will happen. They are fairly confident that there will be Title I funding for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, because there is a person who has been nominated to be the U.S. Department of Education Secretary, so they feel like they'll be funding again next year, but they're very uncertain about the future.
Did you know what your job requirement is to eliminate?
Yes. But, so that's why they're like, that's what we do. But for this year, they're like, we don't know about the future. So, but I haven't seen any guidance from those governing bodies around that. I reached out to DOE to say, "I'm trying to build a budget for Title I, I want, you know, what, what can we be doing, what should we be thinking about?"
Well, I just see how it has the same issue with the superintendent's group, and how are you guys going, where are you looking to find?
Literally, this afternoon, literally, Chairman Wilson put out something this afternoon about the Title IX changes within hours of this conversation. I think, we know how frustrating this is for all of you who have spent time reviewing, editing, and adopting new policies over the past five months, don't hesitate to contest. If you have questions about their art, they have some guidance, but I think it just keeps changing back and forth, and do this, and take this back, and add this. I think it's frustrating. That last paragraph summarizes what it is. So we'll take some of the action steps, but until it changes again, I think, like, it's being the end of a roller coaster, you know what I mean? Some decisions to be made, and then what do we do on the backside?
Can you tell me how much federal money has come into the state of Maine that have been distributed to you?
State of Maine?
Well, the federal, Department of Education funnels money.
So, we have two major grants. So we have Suzanne's, which is in the 450, and we have IDEA, Special Education 360, 370. Those are our two major, that, we have some other smaller ones, but our two meat and potatoes, federal fund, outside of the SARM money that we, that's gone. But every year over year, Sudey relies on Title I money to fund several of our educational technician, primarily one teacher, historically, and Janet Murphy relies on it for several educational technician positions to score special. So, 350, 450, quick act, 800, ash plus a little bit, federal funding. It would be catastrophic if we lost all 800. Yes. If that's your question, yes, it'd be terrible.
I want everybody to be, having been nightmares as I'm having.
It'd be terrible, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure. Brad?
So, I read through these policies, and something that amazed me, I thought that when Aunt Melanson was on the board before we became the chair, that he went through all the policies and updated them all, up to sometime in the 2020, 21, whatever. Judy, am I correct on that?
We did.
That was unbelievable, yeah, you did a great job.
A big swipe, swipe through, yes.
So I'm looking at the last three, one of these was 1996, did you not get?
No, that's.
It was still in the folder, that doc that guides what policies are still in practice, so we wanted to just be clean and be like, that shouldn't be a policy anymore. So, that's what, you're right. We were like, this seems weird that this wasn't picked up before. I don't know if you read the building security and keys one, incredibly outdated, that was 1994.
Yeah, there's lots, lots.
Reference things that we don't even have in place. So, we were like, did this just not get pulled from the document? So just to be completely transparent, that's why we took it to the policy committee to say, these are not relevant, they shouldn't be our policies. Perhaps it could have been cleaned up and just didn't get removed, but now it's completely, will be crystal clear that they're not our guiding policies anymore.
So I don't know if I should apologize for reading all these, not, but, but I did. And the, the last three were, were way outdated. Okay? So, if you look at that, building and security keys, I wish I printed it, brought three copies of them, brought copies of them, because it, I thought the way that was written, that if, if there was a access, unauthorized access to the building, no one could be held accountable the way it was written. So, and, so, and, so that brings up the question of, if we're getting rid of it, what's replacing it?
So, these are either replaced already with something, there was, they were contradicting, like, these old ones existed, but, like, building entry is referenced in another policy, I don't remember what one, because I don't.
And substitute teachers, GCG, I put right behind it clearly GCGA, and then they conflicted, so we have policy GCGA, which is active, and GCIB, which is in-service requirements, is now also addressed in our contracts with teachers and educational technicians. So that's why we also thought that one was not relevant and should be removed.
So I didn't hear all that you said, but I'm, I'm, I'll go back to my question. Do we have something that replaces these? Are we just getting rid of them, and there's no?
No, they're all within new policies, or other policies.
And when, when we issue a FOB to someone, which we use almost all FOBS now, we have them sign an agreement that says, if you were to lose this, this is what you would owe us, we need to rekey the building. If we issue them a master key, it's an $800 fee. So we absolutely have a procedure to manage what we're doing.
That I didn't hear, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I want to circle back, I know it's not my turn, but to Nancy's question, I like to be appropriate as I can financially, so it was really close with the estimate. I know the point you were trying to make, it's a big number, but to be eight in change, the actual change is like 833,000 between those two, and I'll make it worse. We also get Title II, that Sudey does a heck of a job with, it's another 107, so I'm 940,000. And I'm off a little bit, close to a million dollars in that funding if it all went away. It would be, it's almost all personnel. It would be really bad for anyone, bad.
Well, somebody would be, tell me the press, they could write about that.
Yeah, would be catastrophic.
Okay. So we already have a motion and a second, so all in favor of removing the red policies?
Abstained.
Brad, please abstain, yeah. Thank you.
Just too late, we voted. I'm just kidding.
This is a pointed information call, and Sue, were you happy with the way that we're doing all of the committees together in the afternoon? Is it working too much for you guys?
No, it works fine for me, I'm certain.
Works fine for me as well, so we've kind of split the four, so we tag team, and Sue takes the first, and I take the last, and we're great board members, it's been great.
Has worked.
Very well, thank you. So, I'm quick, Sudey, maybe we'll get something, you're, something up, you're gearing up, you're ready. Been waiting for this for ten years, but, just a couple quick for TV, resignation, Sharon LaCicero, school nutrition, I think she will sub for us in that same role. Greg Trusker, middle school track coach, so some minor resignations. We're going to have a school calendars discussion, this is super preemptive, and also a quick snow day discussion, which I know is super pertinent. No, I'm not giving it away, maybe an early release tomorrow, maybe no school tomorrow, probably not coming a full day tomorrow.
Hunter's hoping it's snow day. He asked her that, he's like, you knew asking.
I can stop here in a few minutes, so we'll see, I know we have some parents here, huh?
I'll ask, but.
So just a quick, quick of the calendar, we'll talk snow days in a minute, so almost the exact same calendar, we bring everybody here for that workshop day, we have our orientation for our pre-K, K, and you have to approve this, you're going to have to crack at this next month, but I just wanted you to have a first look. Pre-K, K, 4-9, everybody new to the building. Typically, that's like a blue-white day, high school, middle school, get everybody back in the routine, and then we start in earnest the Tuesday afternoon, Labor Day. That has been our policy procedure calendar for as long as I've done this. Freiburg Fair Friday, Freiburg does that same teacher workshop day. Pi Day, they call it, I think I'm getting old-fashioned, I don't know if it calls it Pi Day, what they used to be, Pi Day, all right, J.R., very good. We've had that. Here's the one, slightly new change, it's probably the only year that would happen. Because this falls on a Thursday, a lot of districts are doing two weeks. I talked to Freiburg, I'm not sure that they are going to do two weeks for the December break, but they said they would align calendars to the point that it would match with our vote center, because to people, we typically give the 23rd off in anticipation of the 24th, so to bring them one sole Monday on the 22nd didn't make a lot of sense, and if this day you go to the top as well. Bringing a sole Friday after the holiday, so the Thursday, Thursday combo is really the only time for a two-week December break. And the other thing influencing giving the two-week December break, if you go to the bottom this day, that's the same, that voucher day is the same. We're still done on June 10th, even with the two-week vacation. So, early release days have not been put in. We met with our district learning team, and Sue does a heck of a job with our teacher leaders and administrators, trying to talk about early release. I know there's been conversation at the board level about early release and what we do on those days, so I think they're being really thoughtful. Those will be in next month, when you vote and have some input on early release. But the other part is the snow day, I know there's been some conversation around that. First three snow days will be traditional, i.e., so if tomorrow gets called the snow day, that will be a good old-fashioned snow day, and we'll add one day to the calendar in June. And if we call another snow day, good old-fashioned snow day, add in June. And then you get my point, the third one. After that, we'll do remote learning days, as many snow days as there are thereafter, I've just been checking who's canceled and who's what. I think, for example, this is public, I guess I can say, York's doing a remote day, at Four's doing a remote day, I think some districts do all remote days. I think fewer districts do all traditional snow days, but in talking to our, our district leadership, feel like we've settled on the right place of the balance of the hut cocoa, going sledding, take the day off, old-fashioned, good time, and the continuity of education that maybe remote learning days provide. So for facts and history, what have we had here? This was really COVID time, it's hard to remember, I think March of 2020, we ended school and didn't come back the rest of that year, and I think we were pretty remote-based during this time, so I don't know if that really counts as one, I can't remember, I know, I know it wasn't.
We were heading to school four days a week, many students, two and two.
So, but we were kind of in that remote mode there, so, but when we started this in earnest, we didn't use any remote days in '21, '22, just straight snow days. '22, '23, three snow days, and we did one remote learning day. Last year, it was that terrible April storm, which I think started, maybe the emergency group thinking about what we do, was awful, the trees down, but we didn't use any remote days, and this year so far, until maybe tomorrow, kids, we've had no traditional snow days yet. So I don't know if we'll get to three or not, and they say in storm, 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 I'm not sure, but we haven't used any. So just background on calendar, historical use of remote days, future plan for traditional and remote, thought this would be the first crack at, and like I said, next month, we'll do the real thing, and then I have to submit it to Freiburg and Lake, so we match and all that, but this is just first pass. There's nothing to really vote on, just test.
Brad?
So the reason I brought this up, is because of the article that I sent you all that was in the forum, Chris Harold, and I was glad to hear back from board members who had kids in school that seemed to approve of snow days, rather than blizzard bags and remote learning and all that. I'm sorry.
I like the blizzard bags after the first three snow days, so then we can get out in time.
And get out in time. Okay, well, my purpose in bringing this up is educational laws in terms of teachers, and the other part of it is, is, you know, remote learning and so forth. Earlier on in this discussion, I can't remember what we were talking about, Allison mentioned about kids in outlying areas, there are areas where kids do not have internet access if we're doing remote learning. So what are we doing for them? Or are we doing for them?
What, can you, to answer that, what grades require actual internet connectivity? Because the elementary school does not, and I don't think the middle school does either, they have physical work.
So for students who we know don't already have internet access, we, on your computer, even if it's Google, you can save it ahead of time, so students are able to use that. So we try to, or we've provided paper for students, that, and again, Principal Wolf can jump in, so I think we start somewhere typically around seventh grade, where there tends to be, we try to do more of an online learning package, and pre-K through six tends to be more of a paper-driven type model. So, but I haven't, well, we've only had one in the last couple of years, so, I don't know if you have anything to add about that, Mr. Wolf?
When we're aware, the teams were aware of the families that, it changes month to month if people, you know, drop their internet service provider, but I think they have a pretty good handle on who doesn't have access at home, and basically, they're making customized plans for those kids, so they have academic work to do in the event that they're so remote learning day. It's a, it's a very small number of kids.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, Suzanne, what would you say that the, I don't know if efficiency is the right word, but how does this compare with face-to-face teaching with a learner, with a teacher?
And Dr. Larry always says this best, if we were talking about would we rather have tomorrow's February 6, February 6, remote learning, or February 6, face-to-face with a teacher, there's no comparison. February 6 in school on that day is obviously optimal. What we're talking about is sort of DeJill's point is, it's not February 6 to February 6, it's February 6, remote learning or blizzard bag compared to June 18th in June, when maybe it's warmer, like, it's already, kids are already thinking about summer, like, that gets harder to say which is more valuable for kids. So the engagement can be a challenge as the school year goes on.
Well, I just found it interesting that either three or four people on this board responded that they preferred snow days versus blizzard bags and remote learning. Those that have kids at school. Danny, I didn't hear from you, what's your thoughts?
Oh, I absolutely responded, and I think it might be worth us talking about the policy with regard to emailing school board and getting consensus, because that falls outside of legal requirements for us to be in public session to talk about that. So, I think maybe some school board members are familiar already with that, and that's why they didn't respond. and that's why they didn't respond, and some of us didn't respond. And I actually had asked a few questions related to, you know, what we're doing at each grade level and whether we have actually received any kind of complaint from any families about us having remote learning days, which, yeah. And we also had any budgeting considerations related to remote learning days. But I didn't know that the first three snow days were traditional either. So I think that that was helpful.
So we're talking one over the last five years we've implemented. So the policy Danny's referring to is BEA, so I might as well send some. The board shall not use email as a substitute for deliberations at board meetings or for other communications or business property confined to board meetings. That's the policy Danny's referring to.
Do we know, I guess we wouldn't necessarily have a lot to go on to answer some of Danny's questions, because she did have good questions. I mean, has there been much parent feedback? Probably administration would hear it more than anybody else in this.
So I'll start with me.
I personally, I had a kindergartner, the one time we've used a blizzard bag in this district, and I thought it was fun, so.
I've heard zero, negative or positive, but zero about the use of the remote day. That I do hear when people think we should have a snow day and not send us to school. So do hear that, but nothing about whether remote or, no, I've never heard. But again, I haven't heard, yeah, this is the best thing ever, but I can tell you, I talked to the group of 20s or a teacher admin, they felt like we're in the right place with the right balance of some traditional, like when we were kids, and the remote for the certainty at the end, and better than coming June 20th when it's 88 degrees. They feel like we're in the right balance. That team of 20, that's all I can speak to. Universal thumbs up to our current plan. But I said, you are the board, you alter, I'm going to bring you the recommendation, you set the calendar. That is one of your things that you're purveying, you decide.
So this will be up against the next year's calendar?
It's going to be that I am going to present the same snow day plan for next year, yes, but the board has every right to adjust that snow day plan.
So next month, it will be a calendar filled in, populated with.
Next month, the only difference between what you just saw and next month, we'll have the pink early release. That's it, you'll have the pink early release. That would be the only difference between what you just saw in next month. And the team will thoughtfully plan what those days are and what's best use for balancing learning with our teachers' professional development. They really do a pretty great job of that. So that would be the only, but my intent is to present what you just saw with X number of pink days for the 12 o'clocks.
I thought I saw pink also for the last days.
Yeah, and I mess that up every year, because then the last day changes, and then that pink changes. So I got to get that off, and I'm going to say, the last day is scheduled to be, but yes, it is at 12 o'clock. But the last day is scheduled to be this. Whatever day it is will be, I mess that up every single year, I'm making a mistake. Thanks Judy, thanks for, right on to, thanks, that's Judy, yeah. That's right, I will promise to get the pink off, yes, that's true.
On there, because I think it's like early release at 12 o'clock.
Yes.
Can you change or put on there, like Hunter, I don't get Hunter until 12:45 to pick up on half day, or 12:30-ish? Because I have to wait for the buses at the top of the hill, so I had to wait for all the buses to go. So at the beginning of the year, I didn't know, I was out there at 11:45.
Thank you for the info.
And then get them until 12:30, 12:45 for the buses.
That could be just a point of communication for the particular school about parent pickup time versus.
Someone had email body, like the first time was like, oh. So just maybe put it on there, like elementary school.
Might be a little later or whatever.
12:35.
Fred, is that an issue with you? I can't imagine at your school that's an issue of 12:45.
When we have early release days?
Yeah.
I mean, we have the two busloads, and the parents can't drive through until after. I think that's what she's talking about, but.
But in your group, they go right through, right?
Yeah, but see, they can pick up in front of the building, so.
So fourth grade can't.
I got you. So it's a K8 problem?
No, fourth grade.
Fourth.
Only fourth. Yeah. Because fifth grade gets picked up.
Only fourth, because they have to wait for all of the buses to go.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you, Jill.
Know the different parent pickup time, although the elementary school is a little bit weird like that, because pre-K is like five minutes earlier than.
Or, or later, depending on the day, you just never know. Also possibly figuring out a better pickup system for winter, trying to park on the side of the road up there, waiting for the buses.
That's dangerous.
Because I have to plow through all that snow with my truck before other cars can park there on the side of the road, at the top of the hill.
It is a little traffic hazard out front of them.
Good cheese, thank you, thank you.
Just driving through, I don't park there, yeah.
I mean, I can park fine, but the other cars, they can't. They have to park like over the white line almost.
So this fourth grade, you can't pick up in the normal parent loop?
Nope, you pick up at the, you sit at the top of the hill until all the buses come through, and then you pick up up front.
I was just going to say, that's why I love having our younger people with kids in school on the school board, that we find out these things.
Sitting out there works great with snow, but then once the snow starts piling up, you can't park off the side of the road.
Could we get a warming shelter for the parent kindergarten? All right, got it?
That's all I have, yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mrs. [inaudible].
Wednesday for these.
Sorry, wait, 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 sorry, this didn't even be on TV. We'll have a board meeting at 6:00, 6:30, 7:00 on the 12th. I know Becky called around, but.